Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Department of Border. Uh, Mr. Davis, Dr. Wolf, please. Sorry, you're welcome. Hello?
Doctor Rollard?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Doctor King?
Here.
Doctor Modra?
Here.
Mrs. Morella?
Here.
Ms. Novy?
Here.
Doctor Ryan?
Here.
Doctor Thomas?
Here.
And Ms. Ramirez?
Here.
And Ms. Smith?
Here.
One minute.
Please rise, please, let's believe. Glad to be here, so.
The United States of America, and to the Republic of America, in this.
Mr. Davis can agree with the Jersey public's public meeting.
New Jersey Public Meeting Law was enacted through the right of the public for the against those who pretend to use the public body, teachers, protect the hearing, and discuss their active bond. To report to the President of the Act, municipal transportation, approved his meeting date. Notice the meetings were posted at the municipal building or municipal public schools, the municipal library, the municipal transportation, the state office building, the municipal public library, and other sites that he had.
Does any of the brace, do you have anything to tell us?
Yes, we do. Yeah, I'm glad.
Governor, real close.
Athletics, Parker Gosh, was found in an place in the top twenty-fourth state at the state tournament in Atlantic City. Um, the competition charity has won all three of their past tournaments, also at Versa Beach, Bell, Tony Valley, and Flint County High School. I would like to congratulate the West Virginia Crown for Two Three High Jump Champion. Um, also, sprint sports will start at this past Friday, and a few days for the esports. Uh, first scrimmage is our baseball plays this Friday at four p.m. home. Uh, softball is Saturday at ten p.m. home, going across the way on that first scrimmage next Monday, and it was across the country, Friday at eleven, four p.m.
As for clubs, uh, key clubs hosting their annual volleyball marathon this Friday, and the theme of television shows, movies, and nearly two hundred teams are registered to play. The student-first future basketball game is next Friday, and forensics competed at Bridgewater and did very well, Rashawn, Oswald, Knopf, Kumar, Green, Burnett, Stacy Wayne, all getting first place. Um, MTHS is proud to host its fourth annual mud exhibit today in the media center, and the event features artwork from some of our most talented students at MTHS, and will be widely attended by representatives from several universities. And Drama Club hosted a musical performance past weekend, and it was a great success, and it was a great show.
Thank you very much, ladies. How does it feel to be this far along in senior year, so a first congratulations, Gary?
Yeah.
Any, uh, board member questions or comments? Thank you very much. Doctor Rollard?
Uh, I would just echo your comments, Ted. Uh, I think it was a wonderful production. The students were just tremendous all the way around, which was a very incredible evening. Uh, we do have, on the agenda this evening, uh, recommendations to revise the school calendar. I've had some input from various sources. We spent a lot of time discussing possible dates with, uh, the administrative team, and unfortunately, um, when it comes to the latter part of the year, funding base, uh, it's a challenge, uh, due to a lot of the activities that happened with testing, heart testing, AP testing, special events that are scheduled at each of the schools, so, uh, we did identify three dates, uh, March twenty-four, April four, and May three at ours. Uh, and those are the dates that were recommended as snow day givebacks, and the board has been updating them this evening. We, uh, we do have a, an initial presentation on the, uh, closed budget. We will, the board will be finalizing the budget at our next meeting on March twenty-second. That's the deadline for submission to the county office for review, so, uh, Mr. Davis and I are, are gonna walk through, um, the budget as it's, as it currently stands this evening. Sure.
On the, uh, calendar, if for some reason we have to close another day, has any board been given which of those three days is back?
I guess it depends when the event would happen. Um, so if, if for some reason we had some other type of emergency that forced us to close school, and we needed to reclaim one of those dates, I guess that would depend on, on when it happened. If we, if we already passed the, the spring break, then, you know, we have, we only have that one day left in, in May. I'm, I'm hoping that comes out and happens, um, and we don't have to do that, but that would be another board discussion to, again, revise the calendar to reclaim a, a day or two of each day. Um, so we typically start out all of our, uh, board budget presentations by publishing on our mission statement. I'm not gonna read it, it's, it's there, but it does guide us in terms of preparation of the budget, and, um, we also have the, uh, district goals included. Some of the goals, um, are definitely reflected in, uh, the budget, particularly in the area of student learning, and the special education need assessment that was conducted. We do have a proposal to expand, uh, our specialized programs, and I'll touch on that in, in a bit. In terms of technology, that is definitely reflected, uh, with the acquisition of some new technological equipment. For our language, we are called upon by recommendations of the oral language task force last year, and I'll touch on that, uh, again. And, um, obviously, um, our goal for to develop a culture of continuous improvement is that, it's focusing on student achievement and student success is a threat that runs through the budget for sure. In terms of what the budget provides, um, we are maintaining class size across the board, uh, at, at all levels, maintaining our present programs, athletics, and clubs. We are implementing, uh, a new special ed program, and expanding the oral language program at the local school level, and, uh, we've included several new elective programs that we have. In terms of our, uh, elementary school proposals, um, we are looking at the regardless of one teaching position at Valleyview School. This is as a result of, we have a class currently, our first grade, uh, class at, at Valleyview has two sections. There are currently three sections at the third grade level, so with two sections moving on grade, you know, we have eight for two teachers, so, uh, we are actually reducing on teaching positions. It will not result in an increase in class size for the students, and most likely due to retirements, the teacher that actually holds that position will regret to retain her position, um, because we have capacity due to the retirements. We'll be adding one additional special education teacher. Adding one additional special ed, special education teacher at Cedar Hill. Uh, we're also adding a part-time basic skills teacher and part-time A cell teacher, um, to address the needs that we have with regard to, um, the individual student retirements that we have. Uh, we are moving forward what's called a tool intervention, the I-Ready Program. That's a diagnostic, uh, sorrow program, um, that allows us to assess our students three times a year. It provides really critical feedback with teachers in terms of identifying where students are, and gathering standards, and allows them to, um, have that information to target specific instruction for those students. In terms of the middle school proposals, I can touch on the world language recommendations at our last meeting. Uh, we've had some floor discussion. We work back to a run more of the curriculum instruction technology meeting net, um, the team of administrators and supervisors met, and we have revised our recommendation, uh, with regard to, uh, the sixth grade program. The sixth grade, instead of beginning their full year of world language in the sixth grade, uh, the students will still have their required elective cycle. The elective cycle will be modified, uh, how currently stands. We will have those students experience a new cycle, a five-week cycle of all four of our world languages, and then they will additionally have one marking period of art and a marking period of computers. Students will then have a choice with regard to their elective enrichment cycle. They will have the opportunity to participate in our music program and orchestral choir, or, um, have the option of participating in elective cycle, which would include TV production, interest entry, nutrition, family, and super clients in this state law. We will, um, begin the, uh, two-year sequence of world language study with seventh grade. Our seventh graders will take a full year of world language, um, and work on that language one A to be followed by language one B in their eighth grade year, that will compare them more successfully than what they're currently doing for level-two study at, uh, the high school level. Students will have also an elective enrichment cycle, have the option of choosing between participating in the music program or selecting the elective cycle, which will be art for all the students, and then creating up the remaining world language. At the eighth grade level, um, things will continue pretty much as is. Uh, students will take that second year of, uh, world language this year, uh, so it'll be the first year for that, but as we do progress, ultimately will be, uh, the second year, uh, and then have the option of the elective enrichment cycle with either the music, uh, option or the elective cycle. At the high school, we'll be implementing several new elective courses. There'll be a course of art history, we'll be introducing Spanish, public communication, uh, a course targeted to our special education students, and an elective course attached to marketing. Technology, um, we have, uh, quite a number, a large number of smart boards throughout the district that are near and into their useful life, so we'll be looking to replace them, not necessarily the smart boards, but, um, perhaps another type of technology that will provide the same facility, uh, and utility that the smart boards do. Uh, we will also be replacing our digital laptops, and we'll be purchasing a number of Chromebooks and Chromebook carts. Special services, I mentioned before, um, this year we implemented, uh, an ABAs program, uh, located at Lloyd Mason for our primary students, as those students are reaching out of that program, uh, we'll be starting a successor program with that. So we've included funding for the budget for staffing materials, furniture for, for that program.
Can you hear me okay? The voice is a little bit louder right now. Just gonna read through the, uh, financial highlights of the sixteen-seventeen proposed budget. Um, first of all, we had, uh, I'm just gonna be, uh, seeing a comparison. One thing I want to point out that before you perform, some of these slides can be a little bit difficult to see. Something we're gonna do is go over the postings to the district website tomorrow. Uh, the whole of, of our budget presentations are already posted out there. Uh, and then you also, by all means, I encourage anybody who has any follow-up questions, to contact us and shoot an email to the whole business office on the new package, and we will, uh, answer any questions. That being said, uh, we did have a slight increase in our state aid, uh, general state aid, uh, for the sixteen-seventeen proposed budget, uh, went up about, uh, forty-six thousand dollars, uh, it's not a lot, but we've extended, uh, the level of funding, we have a level of spending in our operating budget, but certainly better than we thought. Shared services, uh, this is something, uh, we've been doing for many, many, many years, decades, actually, uh, but it comes to, obviously, a lot of our workers are, are just, uh, becoming constrained, uh, over the last, uh, few years, and it's downplaying the economy. And again, I give support that you know that the school district, uh, works hard, and we save as much money as we possibly can, and, uh, we, uh, continue to, uh, involve in corporate personnel, school supplies, our people transportation, share with the interest, and share with other school districts. Uh, we have four, uh, insurances for general liability, with this comp, uh, facility use with the township. We actually do a lot of shared services with the municipality and the township, it's been very successful, but, um, it's an initiative that we, uh, embarked on about two or three years ago, is garbage recycling. Uh, it's been really a win-win, which is how we end the district, and we continue to do that, as a matter of fact, at the next meeting, we're gonna renew that, uh, that contract on some consideration, uh, Dr. King. Do things such as facility use with the township, we'll use your fields, we'll use our gym, uh, our, uh, art fields at some time. We collaborate with the DTW or our facilities department, a lot of collaboration going on back and forth there. Proposed, uh, budget constraints, uh, you know, it is a two percent revenue cap on the school district budget in New Jersey. Uh, it's becoming, uh, obviously, very difficult to, you know, move on year after year to fit all of the, uh, ongoing day-to-day expenses that's, uh, in any school district budget, which is comprised primarily of salary and benefits, which is no surprise to everyone. Matter of fact, it's roughly seventy-six percent of the school district budget is dedicated for benefits and salary. Uh, our salary has increased two and a half percent, uh, by contract on average, in the fifteen, sixteen school years, and the proposed, uh, budget year of sixteen-seventeen. Our appropriations, our expense for health benefits, uh, increased, you know, net expense, uh, six percent. Uh, so again, you know, these are big numbers, especially when you consider it was probably within a two percent revenue cap. So again, you know, notably, it is such a substantial portion of dedicated salary benefits. And the financial highlights of, uh, this budget, we are staying within that two percent local revenue cap, and I think that's very important, uh, this board has worked very hard, uh, since my tenure here, to, uh, to be fiscally responsible, and they continue to do so. You know, there are actually ways that, you know, the board can, uh, go above that two percent if they, if they really wanted to, uh, but we do understand that the board's trying to be fiscally conservative, and we may stay past that. The, uh, actual budget itself, the general operating expenditure budget, is, uh, increasing less than one percent. And we're able to do that because, yes, we had some higher percentage increases in terms of, you know, salary and health benefits, but there were other areas within the budget that we came with less, and so we made it all out of the end of the day, we took, we took the last year's, opposed, uh, the current year's appropriations, uh, opposed to what's proposed, we're actually only looking at less than one percent. And we do have some, well, we do have some new educational and facility initiatives in this budget. Uh, it's not just a maintenance budget, and I think that's important, as Doctor Rollard, uh, highlighted a few moments ago. Some of that's in the facility and capital maintenance budget initiatives that are included in the proposed sixteen-seventeen budget. At the high school, we have, uh, community initiatives, we're doing, uh, some, uh, some roofwork over there, which is also gonna be, pointing at the brickwork, which is, wrap that right in with our projects. Uh, we're gonna be purchasing a truck, we're gonna be using it really district-wide, and buy new vehicles that will, uh, are mainly functions for the band. For many, many years, the band, you know, very successful band for Monaco County, has had to either rent a U-Haul truck, or, you know, there's, there's one of our trying to, you know, get space in the back of somebody's, uh, car and all that, but it's time to, uh, you know, let these folks, uh, have some kind of dedicated deal with this purpose of transporting vehicles, so we have that. At the middle school, we're looking to do some parking lot repairs, uh, and upgrade the, uh, tack line. At the Cedar Hill Elementary School, we're looking to, uh, do some additional speakers in the gym, cafeteria, window line replacements. Hildale School, we're looking to purchase some docked chairs. The school would try to, you know, try to answer some of their admission requests every single year, and obviously not all of them, um, but we do try to, you know, get as many in as we can with the money that we have. At the Valleyview School. Valleyview Elementary School, uh, we're looking to replace, uh, two, a couple of the playground slides that have been, uh, that were, that were broken, and have been able to, that can actually close down, uh, that section of the playground for some time as we'll reopen it a lot. Uh, we're looking to do some, uh, line replacement work as well, some, some signs that's needed. The Mason Elementary School, we're a big project here, assist for the summer of two thousand sixteen, and, uh, another big move in placement project, which is sorely needed because we, we have some business problems, so we need to address those. So one thing we don't want to do is let our facilities, uh, deteriorate, and this board again act complimenting, we've been very, very proactive in, you know, keeping, uh, keeping money in the budget specifically to address, uh, the sole capital needs, so that we don't sit in a situation where we've got trees growing in front of the cafeteria, a percent crazy like that. The Woodmont School, we're looking to do some window repairs, and, uh, again, some more of that ongoing maintenance work, really, in terms of paving and curving. On the technology side, we have some extensive technology initiatives that have been incorporated into the budget, uh, they're driven in large part by curriculums, Doctor Rollard had, uh, you know, reviewed with, uh, you know, a little bit earlier. Again, you know, increasing teacher laptops, wireless projection equipment, uh, numerous smart boards, for example, Chromebooks, uh, continues to be, uh, ongoing technology issue. District Y, we're looking to do, uh, additions in parking lot curving and paving and side door repairs. Uh, it's a backpack four, five of our, uh, of, of schools, as a matter of fact. We have ongoing initiatives for the last three or four years now of, uh, we want to make a significant one of the schools within the district, and the issue is going to be Hildale School, so we have that on here. That brings us to, uh, really just to sum, we're quick financial highlights of the sixteen-seventeen proposed budget. Did have slightly increasing rate of evasion, and by the way, we've been, we're, we're packing, staying out of the front, uh, I had a draft of, uh, the excellent, because I had, uh, more to it, I think, I did so the last few days, so that's a slight increase, which is good, um, but unfortunately not enough to, uh, I don't think that that's a good one. But it's really a two percent increase, uh, in average assessment value of five hundred twenty-eight thousand, uh, and really looking at, uh, you know, pretty reasonable increase, uh, of, of, uh, the very bottom, uh, the average in my household, of seven thousand seven hundred dollars per, uh, per hour. This particular slide, again, will be, uh, on that, uh, district website, and again, you're encouraged to, uh, look at that, and, uh, certain, you can, you can question which you might have.
So we, um, we do have a number of, uh, additional opportunities where we'll be discussing the budget, as I mentioned. At our next meeting, the board will need to adopt a budget for submission, initial tentative budget for submission to the state superintendent for review. We then, uh, have additional discussions on the budget, on April twelve, and then finally, on April twenty-six, will be our public hearing on the budget, uh, as told to be, uh, Josh, uh, before, uh, before the budget. Before we entertain, um, questions or comments, I just want to note, there were, um, unfortunately, as, as we got to work the budget down to the two percent cap, um, there were a number of, um, initiatives that we just could not find before the budget. One that I had specifically talked about, uh, the last meeting was the, uh, my recommendations to include the voice volleyball program, and unfortunately, um, we just didn't know how to bring that in, in the whole input, so, um, we just want to make sure that since we will talk about it, we've recommended, um, that we weren't trying to, you know, do a smoking mirrors, even be able to, uh, realize that we were unfortunately, uh, maybe that's true, that, um, that piece that, uh, that's not really felt.
Any board members have questions or comments? I, okay, uh, Mr. Graff?
Yeah, on the slide, we had up there, Jim, the last one on the finance.
Yes, sir.
The one is a lot, um, the rest are, yeah, maybe I just don't understand, it says for a hundred thousand dollars for assessed value of issue.
Ah, I didn't, I know, Terry said, uh, we're English, Adam. You are right, so that's, uh, that should be the average, I should have had that notion of the average assessment value of five hundred, uh, twenty-eight thousand, for maybe for the next, I'll correct that, certainly before I first, uh, uh, make it.
Doctor Graham? What was the total cost for the volleyball team, do you know?
Um, I believe it was, um, I want to say it was somewhere between two twenty-five and three thousand.
Is that for the equipment, all sorts of equipment?
Self-reach equipment, officials, transportation.
Mr. Thomas?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who worked so hard on the budget. I want to talk about the world language proposal, because it was a proper presentation. I guess I'm kind of jumping a little bit ahead to my curriculum report also, but they kind of do push things, sorry. We had a curriculum meeting last week, we did discuss, what was the original world language proposal? Now, the original, it did pass the committee, I disagree. The original proposal, in my opinion, was fatally flawed for many reasons. One, I think it would have destroyed the music program at the ZAR, because we put the kids in a position of half the choose between music or computers and technology. I think parents might have made that decision for the kids, if you're gonna lose computers and technology, you're not giving music. And if the kids did choose music, they still would have lost that valuable education. The old proposal made kids choose a language in their fifth grade, and they'd be stuck in it, no matter what, until they got to high school. They would have been three years in the same language, and that sounds good, except that it was with the anticipation that we're gonna have a higher level of Spanish two, but there is a Spanish one class at the high school, and then we're a phase of how do you get three years of Lozar after one year of high school? I think this kid would have been difficult. I would have thought that proposal would have done great. And Doctor Rollard and Ms. Howard, to their, very much to their credit, heard the views of some opposing views, I think it was some community members, possibly some board members, basically some administrators, and said, no, it, maybe we can do better. And I know this was a hard pill for both Ms. Howard and Doctor Rollard, first of all, as I know they really wanted three years of world language, and they came up with a compromise, and I want to commend both of them for taking the time to make the compromise. And I will say very candidly, that the compromise, the new proposal which heard tonight, is much better, it is a much better proposal than the old one. It allows kids to have at least a year to get the feedback in music program before having to make that choice. It allows them to at least sample each of the languages, and it cuts the total world language program at the ZAR from three years down to two, which might actually be a good thing, because it allows the high school program to only have to capture two years of education at the ZAR rather than three, which I still not sure exactly how this is going to work, but I have to look at the administrators. As I said, it's a much better proposal, and having said all that, I'm still going to vote against it, and I'll explain why. First of all, no matter how you slice it, it still represents something that I'm completely against. I love increasing education, but as I said a long time ago, I'm not going to support initiatives that create increased academics, whether the way you're going to do it is by cutting the odds. I think you have to understand, there's a really long history here at the ZAR, going back to the. Going back to the early two thousands, when they had a music program that meant some kind of zero period or something like that. I don't know how they did it, but it was such that for two years, they didn't even have enough kids in the music program to put on a concert. I have the Lozahar newsletter from June two thousand one, saying that now that it's back in the school day, we have the program again. Thank you to the administration, it was a real good idea. And why did that happen? It happened because we got a principal, Aunt Kay, who was a music person. Saw what was going on in the program, said this is unacceptable, and he made the arts a priority. It's class four, two thousand five. New superintendent decides scheduling's too hard, never take the music courses and divide them up. So a third of the band practices this time, a third of the band this time, a third of the band this time. Then we're going to just throw it together on stage for a concert. And I see Coach Devonta in the audience, congratulations, by the way, the right choice. I guess the first question I always want to ask kids is, how would you feel if someone said to him, right, get the third of the football team, they're going to practice at three o'clock. A third of the team at four o'clock, a third of the team at five o'clock, and then we're going to throw it together on the field Friday night? So after that change was made, which is still the way it is, fast forward ahead to the budget cuts five years ago. And in terms of superintendent, things had to be cut, we lost our custodians, we lost a lot of things. And we did not cut one single English teacher, did not cut one single math teacher, did not cut one single science teacher, did not cut one single social studies teacher. And out of fourteen music teachers, the original plan was to cut three of them and eliminate our third and fourth grade, two middle programs. Thanks largely to the parents at Lozahar, who just got ready to threaten the, in terms of superintendent, physical violence, since they cut the middle school band right at the time. She elected and put that position back, which saved the fourth grade program without the third grade program. It's funny, we heard Pippin last week, in one of the scenes I played, Pippin was playing the drums, and then he stopped because he said, I just found out that they had a budget cuts personally, they always cut the arts. And unfortunately, I feel that's the way it's been in society for a number of years, cut the arts, cut the arts, cut the arts. It's easy to say, it's only a small change over here, it's only second grade, but there comes a point, you just have to put your foot down and say no to it. The current proposal, as I said, is much better. It's still putting kids in the music programs for two years, where they have to do everything else. They're going to be missing both of the tech ed classes and one of the computer lessons. And even if, every single kid who's in the music program decides to stay in the program, it doesn't hurt the numbers at all, it doesn't make it right. It would be almost like if we said we want to improve the football program, so we're going to have the kids miss the last period of class every day to practice football. And nobody practiced, nobody believes in football, keep it close, and we say, see, nobody left the football, keep it, therefore we do the right thing. So that's one reason I'm against it. Second reason is that, as I said, the little five week committee sessions, it's better than nothing. And I do appreciate the fact that the administration went out of their way to try to give the children a chance to at least experience everything. I'm not sure that the five weeks is going to accomplish much other than letting kids know which teacher they think is the coolest. And I still have problems with the two full years. And I'm not sure how it's going to sync with a one-year program at the high school. If it were up to me, what I'd like to have is a program something like the model thing we have now, half year in sixth, half year in seventh, full year in eighth. But in sixth grade, you could have the opportunity to do one of two things. Either pick your language and then do the cycles, or understand that some kids don't have interest in those cycle courses. Maybe they might want to try it, half year of Spanish and a half year of French, which seems to me like better. Maybe even second grade, still not sure, try half year of Spanish and half year of French, then you make your decisions in eighth grade. Again, I don't know if these things are even realistic or possible, but I think the fundamental problem is that if we're going to make these huge changes to the curriculum at Lozahar. I think there needs to be an overhaul of master schedule. Somebody needs to remind me, when it comes to where our district goes, one of the things I'm going to recommend, just in my personal recommendation, out of apply, that we should look at the Lozahar master schedule. So again, I've talked a long time, I've probably said enough. Again, I appreciate everything that's been done to change the program. It's a much better solution than it was. And from the bottom of my heart, I really do want to thank Dr. O'Carroll and Ms. Howard for taking those things into consideration. I still, however, think it's a well-developed program, and I will go on. Thank you.
Mr. Graham.
Hi, with all due respect to my colleague here. We were somewhere on the stage.
Mike, can you use the mic?
Not working?
How's that?
We're, we're pretty close on the stage, you know how I feel about the music and the arts as well. Okay, and, and I agree with you about the efforts that we made. I, I too was at the meeting, the meeting was very, people vehemently talked about their positions on this matter. And when I left the meeting, you know, I, I had made some suggestions that were, were shared with the director of the department. As it was, with some of those considerations, I, I even at that point was willing to go along with the program. I was completely surprised when subsequent to the program, even more changes were made. So I agree with you that our superintendent has made a great effort with her staff to sort of, I won't call it meeting halfway, but to make some amendments in the program. So I am going to vote for, I think I was going to go, go along with it to begin with, but now having seen the revised program, I am going to vote for it. In the hope that, and I, I think we have to keep this in mind, curriculum is a living, breathing thing, okay, for lack of a better term. Curriculum is not written in stone somewhere on the propolis in Athens. It changes, and I, I think going with this program, it has emanated from the people who are on our staff, from what they think is in the best interest. And we'll see how it works, okay? It's not, nothing is forever. And so I think, I, I also want to applaud the superintendent and her staff for the efforts that they've made to make movement on this. So I, I personally support the proposal as it is now. And I, I understand your position on it, I really, really, really do.
Mr. Graham.
Yeah, I was also at the meeting with Mike, and Mike, Paul and O'Brien. We looked, we had quite a lengthy meeting, and we looked at all kinds of alternatives, all kinds of suggestions. The interesting thing was that last year, world language task force was basically created. Part of that task force was to look how would they improve world language at the middle school. I think what the recommendation is from the administration is excellent. I will support it without any reservations. I think that to say status quo, our world, world language program is not working as well as it could be. I think this is a great advancement. I support my colleague, Mr. O'Brien, I will support this without reservation, and I will encourage my colleagues to do the same. We, as board members, act upon recommendations coming down from the administration. We have a recommendation, if someone wants to vote no, that's their right. I think it's important for us that we have administrators here, not just the superintendent, two assistant superintendents, BA, we have principals. We have a world language supervisor, who has spent many, many hours looking at this proposal. The easiest thing to do is do nothing. But that's not why we're here, we want to improve instruction, and I think this is a great step towards that. I, I'm, I'm very happy it's moving this way, and I congratulate the administration for coming up with this proposal. And I'm looking forward to its implementation next year. Thank you.
Dr. Corleone, can you do something to say?
I can't do that with the budget, but we can finish the session.
Karen, you're good.
I'll cast now. I wanted to thank first Dr. O'Carroll and the administration. So I'd like to thank Dr. O'Carroll and the administration for their hard work on the divisions to the world language programs. In fact, five years, one of the programs or one of the content areas that was particularly hard hit was world language, and I think that's been forgotten. So there were a lot of cuts five years ago, and I remember them very clearly because they were really painful. And they didn't just come in the music department, they also came in the world language department. They hit the elementary schools exceptionally hard, as far as I'm concerned. This has been five years of clawing back, and the reality is, our children are being raised in an increasingly globalized situation. This puts us perhaps on par with other high performing districts in New Jersey, which we like to compare ourselves to all the time. Which we like to strive to equal consistently, because it's good for our children, it's good for our housing values, it's a great source of pride. The reality of it is, across the world, every industrialized nation starts world language instruction in the very early elementaries. To me, this is us coming back to the world language initiatives. I have to thank the task force and those who sat and volunteered their time, as far as I'm concerned. This was a priority, and has been a priority. It began as a priority under Dr. Freed several years ago, and this is a huge step forward. I don't like to see other programs sacrificed ever, but I'm the mother of a current eighth grader. He has chosen to take music instruction for the last three years, and that means there were other classes he didn't take. That's simply a choice. I don't think it's a hardship. We are also increasing our AP at the high school, so we now have twenty-three AP classes at our high school. That's actually fairly competitive. I don't think we sacrifice the arts in this district. If anybody went to see Pippin, or has seen the trophies that have come in under the marching band, I don't think we need to speak in absolutes. That changes to curriculum are going to necessarily decimate any one program in particular. I do not believe that the music program was particularly targeted. I think it's a natural reality of all the moving parts. You have to schedule for all the children in this particular building, you have to assess and be able to provide an education for every child in this building of varying degrees, varying levels, varying abilities. We have to do another two percent cap, we have to deal with extraordinary scheduling difficulties and challenges. And I really do applaud Dr. O'Carroll and the team, the administration team, for listening to the, the community's comments regarding some kind of pathfinding regarding the selection and the coursework and the shifting of that. And I am going to wholeheartedly support the curriculum change.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be later this, but there was one other point, I just want to be clear, it doesn't affect my vote on this or anything like that. As we're talking, you know, and as we go through the curriculum issues, it's, it's very clear how the very traditional ways in which our school days are organized are really a restraint on creativity in many, many respects. Okay, so you know, when you compare it to European systems or other systems, I mean, I, I wish we could be the leader, okay? And I said that in the meeting. But what I want to ask is, as we left the meeting, there was some discussion about also ramping up the club or additional activities other than just writing the curriculum of the day. And there was some discussion that that might be a possibility as well. So I just wanted to ask, is, is the proposal that we have now, which I don't accept, is that in, in place of that? Or will there still be some attempt to do some things outside of the, the regular day that we're discussing? You report what I'm speaking on.
I, I think the proposal is really in place of that.
In place of that.
Due to the monetary constraints, because to include additional money in the budget for student acts, to, to actually allow us to address some of those, you know, additional opportunities for students. It's not something that we could squeeze in this year, which is not to say that we can't entertain it at, at some point in the future, but it's not, we wouldn't vote.
Not this year, is it? Okay, thank you, I, I.
Mr. Paul.
Just a very quick rebuttal. I don't want anybody to come down with an argument that I don't support improvement of world language. I certainly, but I'm sure Governor Kristin could organize a task force tomorrow, who's going to say, would you like to see public passes go then? And everyone of the person will say, yes, 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 of course. And then, you know, if he decides to lower profit taxes by cutting world language schools, then all of a sudden, we're unsure. So while I do understand the purpose of the task force and the, I think probably the advantage still in the task force was that world language is approved. I don't have a problem with improving world language. Where I fall is where it's being taken wrong. And the argument I'm trying to make is that, I think if we had a little more time to think about it, rather than trying to make a snap decision over a couple of weeks. There could be more imaginative ways to rethink the schedule, such ways that we could improve the world language program and still not restrict so much the arts opportunities that our children get. But I'm not against the initiative, I'm just against the implementation. I just want to make that purpose clear. I'm not trying to say we should just leave it as is, you're right, Charlie, the easiest thing to do is just do nothing. I'm not saying we should do nothing, I'm just saying that I don't think the final decision was the right decision, that's exactly how it feels. And the only other thing I want to say is, regarding what Carmelo said about, you know, Pippin and the field award, yes, I mean, these are great accomplishments. I'll just point out that these are quirks though. And to say that we have a great music program because we have a national championship field award, just doesn't quarrel with anybody in music education. I tell you that there's like zero correlation between the qualities of a district's music education program and the qualities of marching band. So just caution anybody who's getting that knowledge.
World language is a curriculum requirement. This is putting us in compliance with what we are required to be. And as board members, it is not for us to always comment and push as to the precise implementation. We are a policy enforcing body by law and potentially by law. Could we, world language, the issues, and I sat on curriculum with you when I was chair of that committee. The world language provisions have been stated by Dr. O'Carroll. As necessary to bring us compliant with curriculum requirements, that's very.
Keep on making it sound like I don't want to prove the world language, you know, I just, I mean, I'm not going to comment any words yet, you know, it's funny.
Yeah, I, I would like to say, to sum it up with the rest of the world language. This is something that really thought process, we had fourteen task force in two thousand fifteen. I just wanted to thank those who are involved with the task force, and I'd like to see it today. I appreciate the passion, this is a pretty solid point overall. But I do feel the administration, which is a very smart, logical implementation. And the one thing I'm sure these board members will have confidence in, we'll see how the vote goes, and we'll talk with him. Because I think the administration will be watching very carefully for any problems, for any issues, for any problems. And the change that's necessary, I'm sure that the. And the achievement as necessary, I'm sure that the administration has heard the voice quite loud.
Dr. Corleone, you have a comment about the budget?
I could, thank you. Is my mic broken?
Okay.
And, you know, maybe it all comes down to money, maybe. And I can grow, Mike can have what he wants in world language, yes, it should be. So I asked this question without mind. I noticed, I couldn't help but notice in preparing some prior powerpoints of the budget, in addition to the volleyball being, there were a number, and I would say a significant number, capital improvements that have been moved from prior iterations of budget presentation. And I guess, I know you didn't do it because you don't want to do it, but because this is the world that we're living in right now, under eight percent cap. And I think for a number of years now, Montville has really been very fortunate not to feel the effects. Although we knew the effects were coming, and the effects are here. The road is beating the road for us now, and if the road comes to the issues, I don't know. But for us, it's been growing now. And it's something that is going to be easy to look at at some point in New Jersey as a statement. And going to continue to enjoy a good reputation of the program.
Thank you. Any committee reports?
Yes. We had a finance committee meeting on February 24th. Be my suggestion, before the January 2nd meeting, that maybe we should schedule another one on the 16th. I know we have another meeting, several of us on the 16th, so maybe we can get the time it says. And then the administration thinks that's a great idea. I'm sure that Wilson's got a word up, you know. So let's figure on the 16th, and then maybe we can get together in the morning, several of us are meeting. So we can maybe set a date. Carmella will get in touch with you if you're the board board member of the committee, okay?
I'm sorry, Charlie, is this for facility, like, in the news? On what date?
I'm booking it to 16th, Wednesday, 16th.
Same time as last night?
Could be. We have another meeting scheduled that day, you know. So it might be, we need the time, let's go to tomorrow. And the report on the 24th, I'll give you when the check will be.
Very welcome, thank you. Any other committee reports? Deliberately, I don't...
Yeah, Matt, yes, yes. DAC. There was an email circulated at this... One board member was concerned about the last DAC meeting. It was reported that a decision had been made. And I think this might have set the town council involved, I'm saying. That a decision had been made by DAC to charge $60 for students attending project graduation. Now, I was at that last meeting, I know Michael was also there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but as far as, I'm sure there was no quote-unquote decision made to charge $60 to students attending project graduation. What was discussed was a proposal to do it. And I guess, put that in context. Traditionally, DAC has sent out the project graduation invitations. And in the graduations, there's always been, shall we say, a recommended donation of something like $60. In, as years have gone through, people have been, shall we say, disregarding our invitation. And it's regarded as short, it started resulting in short ones. And so one of the proposals I was being floated was, maybe we should just get past the quote-unquote recommendation and just say that that's the way it's going to be. Nothing has been decided yet. I mean, I see both sides of the coin. I'm introducing a dance. I know there were some feelings among board members as to how they felt about it. And I just want to open up for discussion because we do have a meeting, I believe, tomorrow night. And I will, of course, be happy just to report the consensus of the board. If there is one, or even if there's not a consensus, just to say, well, there were some concerns expressed on one side or the other. And this is what they are. So just open up for discussion.
Just to follow up quickly, that is correct. As a bit of a background, the DAC, for I believe it's going on 37 years now, has run the project graduation ceremony as a final night of celebration for our high school students. To both celebrate their high school careers finishing from school here in Montville, and to keep them safe primarily on what is the night of celebration. Montville Township's project graduation annually costs between $20,000 to $25,000 per night. Within northern New Jersey, the range for project graduations is traditionally somewhere between $20,000 to $60,000. That amount is covered primarily by private donations gathered by the DAC. They try a number of fundraising initiatives, primarily letters, mailers. Over the past few years, it's become harder to sort of balance the budget. This is just an idea floating through the DAC at this time. They're trying to get a feel from the community to see how receptive they are to that idea. The main thing to keep in mind is that project graduation has to be a community project. We're reaching a point where it just can't be a DAC initiative. Everyone really has to come together and make sure that this night, this tradition continues. So any feedback is welcome.
I think the $50 or $60 was proposed by one of the members of the township committee a week ago. That's where we got the figure from.
No, she was reported with...
Yeah, that's where...
She wasn't making the recommendation.
Yeah, that's where the figure came from. Came from a member of the township committee.
It wasn't their recommendation, just what I explained.
Well, given my recommendation, I think if you tried $50, $60 a kid, you're gonna drop off on participation. That's my observation. Last year, the board of ed came through at the last minute and spent almost $1,000 for the buses because they were short. Now, the fundraisers for the DAC are going down. Then you gotta look at other types of fundraisers, Michael. Because it just, I have a feeling if you're gonna charge your kid $50, $60 to come, you're gonna see participation drop off. And I think the senior class is not the largest of classes either. I think it's a relatively small class. At least I see from the way it parked on Orshack Road, there's not a lot of cars there. But I think it is a small class, so... I know last year, the participation dropped down from the year before, and that was a big class. So if it's dropped down a big class, and this year you're gonna raise it, I think last year each kid was asking to give, what, $10?
No, last year was the recommended $50 donation, plus $10 is the standard fee for their t-shirts.
Okay. So all those kids have went paid $60 bucks?
Yeah.
Okay. I just think you charge too much. You're gonna take it away.
I agree with Mr. Brown. I heard that town council meeting was kind of initial thought that it's such a wonderful program, but it would definitely, in my opinion, there would be a different issue or a decrease in students there. And I appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, if Mike and I are looking for some sort of board consensus, to bring that to the DAC, certainly I'm agreeing, I'm of the opinion to charge that enough money to decimate the program.
I have a question. Does the board make a contribution? Are we making a contribution? I don't, I'm not saying you should, shouldn't, I'm just asking, does the board put anything into that?
The board members individually do. Some of us contribute individually, but not as a board. Last year was the first time that we paid anything, and that was for busing. When we got a call at the last minute, they didn't have enough money to pay for the busing. And that's when we paid for the busing.
Yeah, just for my... I'm sorry. Just for my, it wasn't the DAC that started project graduation. You said they were, they're not, there was youth services that started. And in the early years, we did not charge anything when we started, we did not get charged for these. So it's an incremental thing that's been going on over the years.
So I think you have to take on this issue very much. Thank you. Any other reports, PTC, I don't know, Dr. Corleone?
Yeah, just mentioned that Hilldale is going to be having their trick tray, March 10th. And the whole country club is $75 entrance. We've got a lot of things going on, we have a lot of fun for people. Also, the Hilldale Woodmont, shall settle the basketball game is March 21st. That's always a lot of, there's a lot of competition between the two schools. The girls get out there from all the grades and do a big cheerleading presentation during halftime for the show. The dads are really going at it during the games, it's a lot of fun, I suppose, if everyone's going on. I said, I'm going to the high school on my son's...
Yeah, the Michelle's still going to do.
Any other negotiation reports, judicial reports, public participation, or items on the agenda?
Hi, it's Mary Ann Normandy, please fill the joint. Hi, Mark. Can you just confirm a little bit, because it was a little hard to hear you. So the budget goes up to the two percent cap?
Two percent on the local tax limit, yes.
And another question about the budget. It looked like in state aid, this, last year we got $0 for professional development, and this year we're getting $37,000. Is that, is that your much of something to the program?
No, it actually, it was a general state classification, so it doesn't have a specific for that purpose. That was a category that they typically added. Basically, they're going to do a decrease of the state aid, and that's probably where they decided to use it. Because it's general state aid, we're not going to have one specific category.
Thank you.
Any other comments on public, or items on the agenda, seeing as there are comments? I would like to entertain motion.
Second.
I approve all as well as motion as we prepare.
Whereas, honor about February 16th, 2016, the Montville Township Board of Education affirmed the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in LMS case number 12, that student number 210132 committed an act of harassment, intimidation, and/or bullying, hip. And whereas, honor about February 19th, 2016, the parent of student number 210132 requested a hearing for the board. And whereas, on March 8th, 2016, a HIP hearing was held for the board. And whereas, at that time, the parent said student did attend the hearing and presented testimony on her behalf. And now therefore, we have resolved that the board, after having considered all the testimony and evidence presented before it, has determined that student number 210132 did not engage in an act of hip, as that term was defined by NJSA 18A, call it 37-14. And be it further resolved, the board hereby rejects the hip determination with regard to LMS case number 12, so that the record reflects that student number 210132 did not commit an act of hip. And be it further resolved, the superintendent of schools is to provide written notification of this decision to the parent within five days.
Any questions on minutes, I'd like comments, any questions or comments out of J?
Yes. J four. J four. I understand that we wanted to recommend, and I understand why we have to make this kind of building thing because of the, I guess, the participation or lack thereof on the parks last year. It's basically an improvement, I forgot to remind you.
Yes.
And I know one of the things that you said is, park scores in consideration for GMT and modest valuation, correct?
They're simply replacing NHS scores in those rubrics.
Right, I understand. I'm just curious, to what percentage are the park scores going to Canada?
I left copies of the rubrics for you at your place tonight.
It's on your knee?
So you can just substitute park for NHS. There are certain point values we will have to determine, you know, how the breakout is with the park score. But there will be point values attributed to various levels of park scores. And that will factor into the determination for those rubrics.
Mr. President. Mike is reviewing that document. Could I address this issue while he's... I think there's quite a bit in that document, perfect, I just, I didn't realize it was on your knee, if I may. I didn't want to break through to you. Mike, is it okay if I would talk about this for a second? I'll sort of get right to my concerns, okay? Now, there's one of the things that I asked about in our questions. Now, I know that from experience in the district, that one of the places where the rubber hits the road, so to speak, is admission into various levels of courses, okay? And if you probably took away, it took all the time, that staff deals with challenges and questions about this. You probably have that music program somewhere, okay? We'd have enough fun to do it. So I understand some of it. I don't understand all of it, okay? But my concern is this, now, I know that we have to please a big monster bureaucracy down in Trenton, this park thing, okay? But park goes a lot deeper than that. And I think there's a lot of reasons why students, and I don't know what number, I've heard percentage, but, you know, I don't know the exact number through account heads, don't take park. And I think some of it's about students, I think some of it's about the parent, the family in general. And I think, from what I've heard, and there's nothing scientific about this, there are a number of reasons. But one of those reasons, clearly to me, is protest. Some families do not take it because they object to it and they are protesting it. So by taking park and substituting it and making it, and I want to be, I want to be clear, because I just read this document now, and it doesn't cover all areas of the curriculum. But if you were to say to a parent, we're starting an art history course next year, maybe it's gonna be an honors course, maybe it's gonna be AP, I don't know what it is.
It's an AP course.
It's an AP course, okay. So let's say, say this parent, oh, you protested by not sending your kid to park. Your kid is not getting in the art history program. Now, what you have done is you have used this as a tool to suppress the freedom of expression of that family. If that family feels, they feel strongly, they do not want to take that park test because they object on political, educational, whatever reasons, and this is a form of protest, what you have done, and I could be wrong, I mean, maybe that's, maybe it's just one... That's why I asked about this, is it a required or is it one of several? And even if it's one of several, that means you're gonna have to score high on the rubric on the other items. Now, I can understand it for math and language art, but let's take that art history course, okay? I don't see this, this rubric, well, let me...
Right, but there's no park assessment in art.
All right, okay, so that's why I, that's why I want to, I have to be clear on this. So it is only, this component, using the park as a component, would only be for these rubrics you have here. In other words, it would not be when you get to the high school for taking a literature course. It would not be for art history course, it would not be a science course. And my concern is that using it as a stick against parents to silence protest against the test, that would be, in my opinion... that would be, in my opinion, improper. I, I would even suggest, I, I know I'm rattling on here, I'll give you, excuse me, I would even suggest maybe using the ASK or the park.
I no longer have.
Okay, yeah, all right, that's right.
That's why this is, the park is the official state assessment. I know that there was a large movement throughout the state last year, and, and I think protest is probably inaccurate to say.
Yeah.
Um, however, the, the state did have, um, a task force that reviewed the assessment, they made their recommendation to the State Board of Education, and the State Board of Education has committed to park as our state assessment. In fact, it will ultimately be a graduation requirement. So, we as, um, as agents of the Department of Education really have no other choice but to indicate to parents that it, it is the required exam. And so, I'm not trying to incite a political issue.
It is a political issue, so I'm saying we're becoming part of the problem by suppressing the right of the families to protest.
The families never had, the families never had an option to not take the New Jersey ASK. This is, that was the state test, we never had issues. This is the now state test. So we are simply substituting this test in, in the places where we previously had, uh, it reflected in the rubric that the New Jersey ASK was the test of record, we're now replacing that with the park because the New Jersey ASK no longer exists in language arts and math, and the park is the official state assessment.
I, I understand you're between, we, you, all of us, we're between a rock and a hard place. Do you understand what, uh, that you even, you, do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
We're, we're using this as a hammer against families who are expressing, it, it's a, it's a freedom of speech issue, it's a freedom of expression issue. They don't want to take the test, so we're going to punish you. That's, that's what we're effectively saying, don't take our test, here, here's the result.
But on the other hand, with all due respect, um, and we, we sort of got an ASK this year, but there is, is the potential for districts who do not meet the participation guidelines to have repercussions in terms of withholding of aid. So as superintendent, I, I can't recommend a course of action that would put the district potentially in a position where we could, we could, you know, pass a state act.
Yeah. Okay, we're down to Dr. Broderick, I, I understand, I'm just expressing, I don't know for whose, for press, colleagues, anyone, that this is a terrible, this is not a good situation. I see what the state is doing to us, and not, they're not doing to me, my kids are hurt, okay? I'm not protesting, but a, but a family that has strong feelings on this, they could potentially penalize the family, and we could be penalized as a district, and it's an abomination. For a country that believes in the First Amendment, this is terrible. And, and it's not your fault, it's not the fault of many of my colleagues here, but do you understand my point?
I do.
That's why I'm voting no in that particular item.
Thank you.
Understood.
Yeah, just on Dr. Broderick, under the new plan, all we're doing is substituting park as, as N J S?
Great, and we will have to adjust the point values because the scoring of park is different than, you know, park goes up eight hundred, um, N J S goes up three hundred, so it's after adjusting point values, we will do that, um, but it is really a substitution within the framework.
Okay, here's a problem I have. You said it was just a small point, but I'm looking, for example, the English language arts, six to seven places. Looks like you need eight or nine points to get off. It looks like there's really only three categories, New Jersey ASK score, you get a one or two or a three, the English grade you get a one or two or a three, the teacher recommendation you get one, two, or three. So really, according to your rubric, the park score is going to be a third of the criteria, so if it not the given ones.
Yeah, every year we have to reassess these, one of the things that with the, this one for the English language arts that you're looking at, we've added another component, which is a writing component that is, um, is added in there. So, I, I want to caution you of saying that we're, we're simply going to replace because we have to look at the whole picture. Like I said, we're looking at, um, the gifted and talented program, looking at that. Um, we want to make sure that the rubrics, um, are fair and that no one piece of criteria will keep the child in or out. So these are, these are no longer what we're using because the ASK is in here. We haven't taken out every, any kind of state assessment this year, they reworked them, and so next year, when we can include the park, we're going to look at it again and review all the components.
Well, I guess a question I had, and it was an agenda question I asked, I didn't really get an answer, so I guess I have to ask it now. If you're saying we have to revise it, this doesn't really reflect everything, then.
This was last year.
I understand.
Right.
So can you tell me right now, what percentage is park going to count for the students placement? Is it twenty-five percent, is it eleven percent?
We don't, we don't have it because we were, and, and last year we were told we can't use the park assessment for placement. We don't have the new ones coming in. So, right now, the high school students have basically done their scheduling, okay? Teachers recommend them for their honors classes. If a child doesn't get in apparent because they want their child in that program, they do go through an override process. We don't have park data right now in order to make any determination, so it's not being used. So this action plan is for the following year when we actually have park data. At that point, we have to sit, we have to go back to the drawing board and I have to work with the supervisors to make a fair and equitable, um, rubric for, for honors placement.
So this isn't for this coming year?
No, it, it's already been out there what is used for this year. The, if you're a Lazar parent, you should have had that, um, known to you, and, and at the high school, um, they use teacher recommendation. Um, and then for the actual overrides, a supervisor looks at the entire child's transfers.
So next year, they've been scheduled or are in a process very soon, but have the, have the students been scheduled for next year?
Yes, the, the problem is they take the park in, in April, we're promised the scores back in June. The master schedule at the high school is not by June first, those kids are all scheduled. So, you know, where would we use them right now? But moving forward, it is going to replace the park as that for park, the percentage, we don't know right now.
So will, will this park scores be used for next year's placement?
Not, not at the high school and, and at Lazar, we are looking to use that as a, possibly an override criteria, as a piece of evidence. Our, our, our bottom line is we don't want to place a child in an honors class if we don't think that they can, you know, that they can be successful. At the same time, we want to use all the evidence that we have available to us to say, yeah, we want to give this child a shot.
I mean, I, I totally understand the necessity for the improvement plan, and I think test scores, like anything else, should be a consideration. I don't think it should be a big consideration because I think we should say philosophy tests really shouldn't be so much to the value of the student, it should be to evaluate our curriculum, not what did we get or why did we get.
So we, we want to make sure that our criteria moving forward, no one piece of, of data keeps a child in or keeps a child out.
But under this, under this over here, if you use exactly the same gap, it would be impossible for any child to walk without, out of the park and in honors. She just said she's not ready. She just said that we're rewarding it for next year. Right, but, but the point I'm trying to make is, if we don't know what the percentages are going to be, then are we kind of voting for? I, I trust the fact that the administration is going to come up with something that is going to be useful for us to go forward with this, and to keep on hammering on this right now, when we don't even know what it's going to be for next year, let them come up with something.
Well, with all due respect, is this something that would come before the curriculum committee or, I, I mean, the first I saw this was in the packet and then what the public is seeing right here is not the same as what we, we saw in, in our notes, okay? So, you know, I am concerned about, I'm concerned about, I know it's next year, okay? But I think it's the topic we're talking about. Getting into honors and A P in a town like this, in any town, but in Montville, is hugely important to me, okay? But I trust the fact that the administration's, well, well, it wasn't discussed.
But it will be, she just said it, I sat on that committee for years, it will be discussed by the times where the scores are in, and when they understand they can follow the rubric, this is the old rubric, it was given to us for informational purposes, that's a rubric that's been around for years.
But in the correctional plan, it says it will be, it, it's going to run like a foregone solution, why, I don't see why, isn't this not a topic worth discussing?
We are required to submit the corrective action plan.
I understand.
And if it releases more, I can remove that item from the corrective action plan. But, I mean, there's no requirement that it be included, um, and we can review that with the, uh, curriculum committee, uh, they are going to actually, uh, discuss those rubric, rubrics, uh, for the year. Um, so, I, I think it makes our plan a little bit less drawn, but, um, I, I don't know that they're going to necessarily reject it if we don't vote this, so, you know, if that would make more, you know.
But you guys are going to, the administration's in place for a purpose, and let them, let you guys come up with whatever you're going to do, and then let us make a determination then. I don't understand why we're trying to put the park into a horseback. Let, let the, let the administration come up with whatever they're going to do, and then we decide on whether or not we feel it's a push.
Okay, so are you saying then we should not vote on J four tonight, based on what you just said?
We need to vote on J four tonight.
We do not, then I moved every table J four.
You need to vote on, you must vote on J four tonight, but what we can do.
To meet a deadline, is that?
Yes. But what we can do is to amend the plan, to withdraw the piece that talks about the criteria for different child placement. I'm fine with that, we can submit with that.
I just have one more question for clarification, let me stop the drop. Are you saying that the new plan is just going to basically say that the park will be a consideration for placement, that you're not putting actual rubrics down?
I don't know. We, no, I can, I can remove that item from the corrective action plan.
Because I don't want, if the corrective action plan says, as part of the corrective action, then we will, you know, consider, we'll make park score one of the considerations for advanced placement, and I, I don't have a problem with that.
I think that's what it's intended.
Well, that's what wasn't clear, I think, if I could agree with my colleague. That's why we're asking, because we're voting on something and we want to know, it's important to know what we are voting on. It, it does not seeking the park preclude the student from taking the art history the next year? Or are the other criteria enough that if that student's family determined they didn't want to take the park, could he or she still possibly get into art history? That's, that's why the words that were in there were component, I didn't see the word required, I, I read it very carefully and I was looking for terminology that would clarify, and it wasn't there. So I, I don't have a problem with moving forward here.
The corrective action plan states revise selection criteria for honors and gifts in voucher program selections to include park score as a component.
Uh, it, it said include, so it's required, it is, is that the same as required? Uh, what I'm asking is if the student didn't take art, can they get in art history advanced placement? That's a yes or no?
That, that will be determined, it doesn't, the corrective action plan doesn't state how, it just says that park scores would be a component, whether it's a required component or whether there will be, you know, best three out of four, um, rubric plus whatever.
Okay, got it, I, I'm good, I'm good, thank you, thank you. I, I appreciate your patience with the people on this board.
Uh, Dr. Meldrum. Uh, regarding J five, uh, I just heard, uh, a number of community members about that, not the proposal for, uh, giving back those days, March, March first, before, um, they made very firm, sorry, March, my word, I'm forgetting. Um, there is something, sure, I've heard from other community members that maybe that's standing, it's a very, a little far that we, well, made that thing. Uh, so I, I guess I'm asking, were all the other days just taken and there are really no other good options for this investment or works?
There really were not very many options because when we went back, we wanted to be able to, car testing, which carries us through pretty much April, June and May, we're talking about A P testing and, and to end your activities, and there really were not very many options, unfortunately.
Okay, I think this one, yeah, the problem is, also, just, I, I'll just say one thing, I, 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 I think all of us board members, I think, in the community, pretty much get the sense that Dr. Broderick and the administration very clearly research this before they're even published, and the certainty that Dr. Broderick and the administration have done that. Oh, yeah, I, I'm asking a question, I just want to clarify that, also, I, I believe on our calendar we have days listed or extra study, which may just push day maybe back to vacation time, or, um, I don't think we have the same, uh, we just days that we've got with, uh, possible, would I have, would that be a good?
I'm hesitant to do that because I think sometimes it, it creates, um, inclination for people to plan on having some of those days back, so I, I, I would not make the day from, I would.
I'm, I'm okay with that, just one, I didn't answer this question as well, okay?
Uh, any questions, comments, or, okay? Or, any questions or comments?
I know, uh, I don't know what number it is, but I am very pleased that Chris Ross is going to be able to, this is president.
What rubric is that, because I want to vote now. I'm definitely voting.
Tell us more, what?
Hi, Ellen, any questions for the Congress? And, or?
Graham? Yes. Was it nobody?
Yeah.
Dr. Corleone?
Yes.
Johnson?
Stand on K four P, yes to all.
K four P?
K four P is.
Dr. Mudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Morell?
Stand on K four K, yes to all.
Mr. O'Brien?
I vote aye on all items.
Mr. Palm?
I vote no on N seven, this and everything else.
Hold on, wait. M seven. And Dr. King?
Yes to all.
Close his mouth.
Any old business? Any other, any, uh, any, if there's no old business, any general board comments?
General, I, I looked at the, this is a compliment, I should give Dr. Broderick, the, I looked at the park schedule, and this new thing they've done, I guess they have to expand it to the number, I guess only four classes, they've got some additional longer periods, supermarket park. to part with PARK testing.
At the high school.
Right. Which, I guess enables those who are taking the PARK testing to pass, and those who aren't, just go to normal classes.
We, yeah, we don't have to worry about having a parade opening, just a holiday testing, and the high school staff really did a wonderful job of organizing that and testing.
Yeah, whoever puts that together, kudos, it's a great idea, I like the way it's done. I think it's going to be minimal disruption, so, congratulations.
I cannot be correct, but I think it's supposed to do a great job.
I, I just want to comment on a couple of things. First of all, there were a handful of us who went to the NTHS, Bama Club Play Pippin. For those that were there, and you were there, Dr. Worldcar, with your husband Paul, and Dr. Cordino, Miss Plana, I'm not too sure who else was there. Pippin was just a really wonderful event, Dr. Brochard, Mrs. Plana, or whoever, as did the high school representatives, you know, from, from, the playbill, uh, least important, all the way up to the pit and music, and of course, the acting direction was just a realization show this year, that, and so on, and seen about the last fifteen or so, had the high school do a great job. The other thing, and it was one last Wednesday, a number of those board members were a few across, uh, America, were, uh, we, not only us, but a number of, uh, figures from town and, and county and state came in, Senator, Freeholder, our mayor, uh, Dr. Brochard, I know you were there to kick it all off on Monday, uh, and just to sit and read books with the children. And that is an event which, uh, I haven't had the opportunity to go to to all, but I would make sure to go every year now, seeing looks on the faces of the kindergarten third grade students, uh, was something I'll carry with me easily, and, uh, fuel my desire to go back next year, for sure. Any other comments for Mr. Graff?
Yeah, tonight also, oh, my high school was, uh...
Mark the line.
And, yes, it was really fantastic, and he was a gentleman, and, uh, and I know several of my colleagues were there. Next year, I promise that we'll be able to say about it before we, but, but participation was a very good, capable, and very happy library, excuse me, media center, not a library, and, and, I know on the twenty second, that's where we're having our meetings, we've got the media center.
Yes, we'll be at the high school for the next three meetings.
Next three meetings, yeah.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Couple, first of all, I'd like to agree with you, though, reading across America, I, I almost think they should have it more than once a year, it's such a great opportunity for, just a great opportunity for us to find the kids, okay, to be the kids.
I have to say, your Dr. Sustad was looking foolish, it gets like that, it's like...
Uh, I'd just like to address another topic, which our past president has addressed a number of times, and I'd just like to reiterate it, and beg the indulgence of the board for just a moment, okay? A couple of those. Uh, first of all, Dr. Brochard, I want to thank you for being so patient with us, and it's important, because you're, you're as patient as my mom, I, I really, she's a brave lady, okay? Um, but, here's, here's what I'd like to say, and, and again, Dr. Cordino has brought this up here, and did a little, I was surprised to see in the paper of last week, actually it was online first, and then it was in the paper, I wrote this to the intention of my colleagues, so I want to comment on it, and I did a tiny bit of research just then. Uh, we have a terrific school system. It's not the biggest school system in the world, but we have a, a superintendent who is, from what I've heard, responsible for over six hundred employees, and if you want to throw in substitutes, you're getting close to a thousand. We have a chief financial officer here, deals with a, a, an institution that's bigger than a lot of corporations, okay? And we're faced with a situation in New Jersey where some powers, whoever they are, feel that certain people are not worth various amounts of money, okay? Uh, in published in New Jersey, uh, the Star Ledger last week, and I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, because everybody has value, and I'm not making a judgment on the value of other people in, in the area in which they work, I do not know all the particulars of what stress and problems they are under, but I just want to point out here, we have a superintendent's cap that limits our superintendent to the point that next year, some of the people who report to her will be making more money than she makes, and the following year, the way things are, that would continue. I read in the paper, and again, I don't want this to take the wrong way, I'm sure this person was working, about a law enforcement official who has twenty-three people he needs to evaluate, or she, twenty-three people, and makes a quarter of a million dollars. Our superintendent has over six hundred people, and she is restrained by a budget cap that exists in the state. And I could go through this list, twenty-six people, twenty-six, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, thirty-four people, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, the amounts here, I could go on and on, and I just, I know that our past president has brought this to the public's attention in the past, and it's not to degrade the work that other people do, people work so much, but I think in the situation we have today, where we have this cap on the administration in our districts, I think it's a terrible thing, and I think it's not fair, okay? Especially when you have a situation where a person can work for more than money as being part-time governor half-time, okay? So, I, I just want to bring this to the public's attention. Uh, you know, when we think about public education, you realize there are some people making great sacrifices to do the things that they do for our children, and are willing to read book stuff, you know, for the outside.
I'll just, I'll just echo him, Mike says I, I agree a thousand percent, I've never been in favor of the superintendent cap, and I, I guess it's just something wrong, there's something wrong when a person who has the responsibility, that Dr. Brochard has, makes about a third or a quarter of as much money as to go hunt supply, coach, or whatever, so, we get it there.
Thank you for your patience.
Just for the sake of the public, the superintendent's salary cap is at the sunset November of two thousand sixteen, so unless the legislature or the governor, I mean, really it's the governor, who would instruct the Department of Education to do it, that does not happen, so, it's sunset. There might be some light in, um, the public's eye.
Hopefully, the whole time spending out of state just won't notice.
Maybe that sunset will be a sunrise, is really what you're saying, yes.
Uh, no other general comments? Any other participation? Seems there's no place, I think it's one.
Uh, Susan Arina, twenty-sixth La Clay Road in Monville. First, I want to say thank you for reevaluating the World Language Program. I have two children in the middle school band right now, and it's fabulous, and Miss Diego is fabulous, and I would hate for the numbers to go down, hate on adding the language full-time to seventh grade, so thank you for that. Um, I, I do want to raise a concern over eliminating the honors English rubric in the sixth grade. Um, I have one who arguably was not in honors and one who is currently in honors, and there's clearly a difference. And based on the district newsletter, and I'll quote, "There are numerous examples of students who are pretty scholars level even though they don't truly meet the selection criteria and struggle." So, my question is, why are we eliminating a class because the process is broken? I just think, I hope that we could reevaluate the selection process for honors in sixth grade English and keep it instead of just eliminating it, because I think that there are students who really benefit from honors in sixth grade English, and hopefully, that's not a, done any harm.
Thank you. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn. Second?